The City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to be held on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. We will have invocation by Brandon Freeland, Twin Rivers General Baptist Church. Please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, I praise you and I thank you for the honor it is to give you glory and praise. I thank you, Lord, as your word commands. First of all, we pray for those that are in authority. And as those sit in this room are in authority, we pray for them. We pray for our leaders of our country, both state and local. I thank you, Father God, for your grace and your mercy that is upon us, though we don't deserve it. Thank you, Lord, for giving us every breath in our body. And I pray, Lord, that we return in favor by worshiping you and giving you praise and glory. Thank you most of all for your Son, who came sinless and died a horrible death, that we may have life and life more abundantly. And I pray, Lord, that we repent and trust in him. We pray, Lord, that these proceedings give you glory and praise with every breath. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that invocation. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilman DeGarris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilman Black?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Young. Disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
I need to recuse myself from Workshop Item D and Action Required Item DD.
So noted. Item Six.
Mayor and I will recuse myself from Workshop Item C. And I don't think we're acting on it tonight. Yes, we are, N6C also.
So noted. Thank you. Any other disclosures? Hearing none. Item Six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. We have Mr. Chester Palmory.
Just Palmory, no one can hear what you're trying to play on your tape recorder. Dinner, discussion with the candidates, the councilmen at large. 6:00 PM. At Pizza Inn. And I guess I'm done with the public service announcement. The second part of my talk has to do with muslin of the citizenry. About nine years ago, Doug Bagby and company attempted to limit my time and your time from 10 minutes down to 3 minutes. And that was an issue at City Council meeting with very little notice to the public. Well, when I found out about it, Greg and Jack and I called him on it and we shut him down. I believe it's about time for us King Cerberus, if there's any of us left in this world, to rear our ugly heads again. Now, third subject. Question and answer. I now yield about seven minutes for you folks to ask questions and comments about how we're going to take this town back from the people who have been running it into the ground for many, many years. So have at it, people. I yield the floor. I'm sorry. I yield for questions and answers. Seven minutes of it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Palmory. If there are no questions, we'll move on. Item Seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so. Do we have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item Eight, workshop items for discussion. The City-
Excuse me. A few weeks ago, we tabled a matter concerning the police union contract, and I would like to make a motion that we move that to workshop tonight. Take it off the table and move it to workshop tonight.
Second motion.
Motion has been made and seconded that we move the item off of the table and into workshop. Item F. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The item is back on the workshop. Item A, the City Council will discuss reappointing Dean Million as municipal court judge.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you all know, this is one of three positions that's actually hired by the City Council, the other two being the city clerk and the city manager. This position has to be reappointed every two years. So I would just ask you to pass this on to the voting session for the February 3rd meeting.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item B. The City Council will discuss a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission for the proposed zoning designation of C2 General Commercial for property to be annexed at Shelby Road right-of-way down to the west side of Business 67 right-of-way, which is Westwood Boulevard. The property owner is the City of Poplar Bluff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this is a topic of conversation we've had several times over the last few weeks. And tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending that this property be annexed as a C2 General Commercial for future commercial development.
Make a motion to pass tonight's voting session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass it to tonight's voting session. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C. The City Council will discuss a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission for the proposed zoning designation of RS1 Rural Residential for property to be annexed at 3547 Northwest Wood Boulevard. The property owner is Fellowship General Baptist Church.
Thank you again, Mayor. I'm sure you're all familiar with this property. Also, we've discussed in their request to be annexed. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that this property be annexed as RS1 Rural Residential, which is what the applicant or the property owner had requested.
I motion this be moved to the voting session tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item D. The City Council will discuss a recommendation from the city staff for brokerage services for health, dental, and optical insurance. Mr. Mas again.
Yes, this was workshopped at the last meeting. Put it back on the workshop tonight. I know there was concern from some of the council that the committee that interviewed the different insurance firms, the committee selected American Fidelity, actually out of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, with an office in St. Louis, and then another one in Cabot, Arkansas. I understand everybody's concerned about that. The committee's second choice was Sona, Sonus, which is in St. Louis, but they also have an office here located in Poplar Bluff of the local agent. So what the committee is basically saying, if you're not able to go with their first choice of American Fidelity, they would like Sonus, which is their second choice. And I know there's somebody here from one of the insurance companies here in town, one of the local brokers that bid on it, so I'm not sure if he wants to get up and speak.
We have a representative here from Sonus.
We have someone from Sonus and First Choice Insurance.
Okay, would you gentlemen like to have something to say? Do you have anything to add?
Good evening. Do I need to state my name or anything?
Please do for the record.
Matthew Phillips. And do you want the address as well? 213 Puahicah, P-U-H-I-C-A-H Boulevard in Puxkill, Missouri, 63960. So with that, it kind of changes my total, my whole speech, because, you know, I was one of the ones that had kind of voiced some concern to a couple council members after two weeks ago meeting about moving it out of state. So I can, I'm actually just going to completely go off script from what I actually had prepared, because I think it's important that we do keep it local. You know, my question, my closing statement tonight, I was actually going to ask, what's your community worth to you? Because your vote parallels what you see in your community and the value. Take me out of it. If I'm deemed unqualified to handle the city's insurance, I would just pray and hope that it would stay local, because it is a huge benefit to keep that local revenue here in town. You know, I would go to say that the current broker, this is just assumption here, the current broker probably has a revenue of about $200,000 off the account a year, which there's a formula, which I'm sure you all are aware of. The one that I found was done by, was a 2003 study done by the Institute of, I'll have the name of it for you. The Institute for Local Self-Reliance. It says that every hundred dollars that's spent within your community, about another forty-five dollars is generated or created from that hundred dollars that's spent. So that money keeps, you know, keeps circulating, keeps growing, and it benefits. I would think it would be crazy or asinine, personally, that may be a strong word, and I mean that with all due respect, but to move it out of the region, out of our community. So I'll kind of leave it short, because that was a little bit of a different change. I was, I had a little bit of some other things to say, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. I just want to see what's best for our city and what's best for our community. And I believe keeping it local, even if it is my competitor that's in the room or someone else in town, I would rather see it stay there versus to go out of state. Thank you, man. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Make a motion to move it to the voting session tonight.
Second.
Did I jump ahead of you, Ed? Did you want to speak? I thought, okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item E. The City Council will discuss a request to enter into an agreement with Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission to prepare a proposed grant application for the 2020 NDNR Land and Water Conservation Fund. LWCF Grant Cycle.
Wayne Court Chumelia. Common spelling again. It's the same thing that we discussed a couple weeks ago, except that, I guess the wording was a little bit different. We were entering in it as city being the sponsor, and then this is the actual agreement with Ozark Foothills to do the grant, administer the grant for us. And there's not a whole lot more to it, except that we're still going to look to updating a couple of local parks for this, with this grant.
Make a motion that we move the voting to be included with the approval of the grant application in resolution 1915 later this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item Nine, action required item. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Item F. Has to do with the police union contract.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that was tabled several meetings ago. I know you all received copies of it back then, and so it was tabled, not sent to the voting session. We're just asking this to be moved to the voting session on February 3rd council meeting.
Make a motion to move it to the voting session, February 3. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item Nine, action required items. AA Bill Number 8202. The City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing and directing the submission of a ballot proposition to the qualified voters of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to consider imposing a local use tax at the same rate as a local sales tax of the City of Poplar Bluff for purchases from out-of-state vendors that exceed $2,000 at the general municipal election to be held in the city on April 7th, 2020.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8202.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing and imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 2 and 1/4 percent pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Sections 144-600 through 144-761 RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any city sales tax is repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for the submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the City of Poplar Bluff for their approval at the election called and to be held in the city on April 7th, 2020.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8202. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 2 and 1/4 percent pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Section 144-600 through 144-761 RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any city sales tax is repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the City of Poplar Bluff for their approval at the election called and to be held in the City of Poplar Bluff on April 7th, 2020.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. Bill Number 8202 is adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 8203. The City Council will take action on an ordinance with respect to the annexation petition of Shelby Road right-of-way from the south side of existing PP Highway right-of-way down to the west side of existing Business 67 right-of-way, which is Westwood.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8203.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being described as Shelby Road right-of-way from the south side of PP Highway to the west side of Business Highway 67 and owned by the City of Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being described as Shelby Road right-of-way from the south side of PP Highway to the west side of Business Highway 67 and owned by the City of Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8203. Give him the motion, I'll take a second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8203 is adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 82- Bill Number 8204. The City Council will take action on an ordinance with respect to the annexation of certain unincorporated area of the City of Poplar Bluff, such property being located at 3547 Northwest Wood owned by Fellowship General Baptist Church.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8204.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 3547 Northwest Wood Boulevard and owned by the Fellowship General Baptist Church.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 3547 Northwest Wood Boulevard and owned by the Fellowship General Baptist Church.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8204.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8204 is adopted.
Item DD, Bill Number 8205. The City Council will take action on an ordinance with respect to selecting a brokerage service for health, dental, and optical insurance.
Motion for first reading. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance selecting a brokerage service for health, dental, and optical insurance program for the City of Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance selecting a brokerage service for the health, dental, and optical insurance program for the City of Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris? Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. Bill Number 8205 passes.
Item EE, Resolution Number 1915, the city council will take action on a resolution relative to the city's submission of an application for the 2020 Missouri Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Cycle.
Motion for the reading of Resolution Number 1915.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the Parks and Recreation Department to apply for funding from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund and for the selection of Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission for professional services relative to the grant application and further authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating thereto.
Motion for adoption of Resolution 1915.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution Number 1915 is adopted. Item FF, the city council of the city of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law in Section 16.21.1, .2, .3, .9, .11, .12, .13, and .14 of Revised Statute of Missouri following the city manager's report. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Okay. It passes. Mr. Mas again.
I wanted to give you an update on the Highway 67 project. I know I'd announced a couple meetings ago that we had been awarded a little over $10 million grant through the governor's office, a very competitive grant. And also, I didn't, wasn't able to announce at that meeting, but we were also awarded through MoDOT, a little over $10 million cost share grant, so a total of $20 million. The plans are to, that will take care of the first four miles from the interchange at 160 going south down 67. The first thing we have to do is an environmental impact study. One was done years ago when, back in 2005, when the, they did the entire corridor, except for they didn't go all the way to Arkansas. Since that environmental study's that many years old, we have to do another one for the south end. So we may need to have a special council meeting one day next week to accept an engineering firm to do that. There's not a lot of engineering firms that do it, but, and it kind of needs fast track so we can make some cutoff or deadlines on the, on both of these grants. But I'll have Nevada contact the council and council meeting, but, so that project is moving forward. I mean, you're not going to see dirt moving for a while, but you have to do environmental impact study, you have to purchase property, and, you know, the cost share of that comes out of the 67 tax that was passed in August of this last year, which was approved by an overwhelming 88% of the voters, so that's all I have.
Motion adjourned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Adjourn. We'll take a five-minute break and we'll reconvene.